I would like to call the Monday, April 10th, 2017 meeting of the Blue Springs Planning Commission to order. If I could get everybody to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and welcome everyone this evening, as well as those watching us from home. I will run through tonight's agenda. We have the consent agenda, or consent agenda is the first item of business. Then, item two is a plan development, final plan for Colonial Highlands. Item three is a final plat for Colonial Highlands, first plat, and then we'll have other business. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Salute.
I have a motion, how about a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two is the plan development, final plan for Colonial Highlands, and Mr. Jury is going to make that presentation for us this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Graham and Commissioners. Before you today is a request from the applicant, the Sulees, on behalf of Sulee Homes, to approve the final plat and the plan development, final plan for Colonial Highlands, first plat. This request encompasses 41 lots and eight tracts on roughly 21 acres, and is generally located about 2,000 feet west of southeast Adams Dairy Parkway, on the north side of Wyatt Road. The property is owned, single-family, seven, SF7, and is a planned development as well. This proposal is the first phase of the Colonial Highlands subdivision. It includes 18 two-family lots and 23 single-family lots. Here's a plan view of the final plan, and you can see the detention basin in the southwest corner. The single-family lots are more in the northwest corner, and the two-family lots in the southeast corner of this final plan. In general, the proposed layout does match the preliminary plat for the final plan, or final plat, and then the plan development concept for this final plan as well. The landscaping does meet all of the landscaping requirements, and the amenities are shown here. There's a pool in the center of the tract. In this area here, there's a pool and playground, as well as the stormwater water feature in the southwest corner of the development. There's also a few signs that they are proposing in this development along some of the major roads, one of those being Major Road. The pool cabana, here's a plan view of that. One thing that I will note that I believe they probably have addressed them with the plots that they recently printed off, but the applicant will need to add southeast, the southeast quadrant designation to the street names, as well as changing some of the street names that they propose, so that they're not similar to pre-existing street names within the city. And that is one of the conditions on this final plat. Here are some of the duplex floor plans of Colonial Highlands. Some of these, there's four different duplex plans that they provided, and all of them do meet the requirements of the residential design guidelines in our UDC. Here's one, the second one, with two garage fronts. They have a mixture of front and back garage-loaded houses, as well as some of them have a side-load garage as well, to provide some variation and to keep the garage in the front of the area, or in the front of the house to a minimum. They do have a one-and, one-and-a-half-story houses for the duplexes. And they also provided some images for the single-family area, and most of these images are either one, one-and-a-half, or two stories, and they do have multiple, or at least two materials on each frontage, or each front facade. Here's their playground that they, image that they provided to at least provide staff with some direction for what the playground material and design will be like in the proposed Beyond that, staff does have a couple things that we do want to note. First, financial guarantee for the landscaping sidewalks and trails within and adjacent to the open space tracks needs to be submitted prior to final plat approval for the City Council. Also, there are some public improvements left to be done within the streets, and those must be installed prior to the City Council approval. So that does mean that we are most likely going to push this back to the May 1st City Council agenda for that purposes, or for that purpose, to give the applicant a little extra time to install some of the public improvements that are required. One other thing that staff does want to note is that the developer did request that a condition be made, that they only be required to install the signage, playground, swimming pool, and associated improvements prior to the final plat approval of the third phase. Typically, staff would require that these improvements be completed prior to the final plat of any subsequent phase, thus meaning the second plat. But they did request that they be allowed to postpone that to the third phase, or the third plats. So with that, staff does recommend approval of the final plan with four conditions, and the final plat with 10 conditions, and I'll stand for any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Jury?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner, appeal.
Mr. Jury, can you tell me what the height of the hedge row that is in the southeast corner of the development that the developer's going to try and keep?
I do not know what size that is currently.
So I think it calls for 25 foot?
I don't know if the applicant might know.
Dave Brinney, Schlagel and Associates, 14920 West 107th Street, Lenox, Kansas. Are you talking height of the trees or width of the setback?
No, the actual height of the hedge row that is in that southeast corner.
I'd say there's a variety of heights of the existing trees. I would say generally, the majority of them are probably 20 to 25 feet tall. There's probably a few of them that are a little bit taller. We probably haven't measured the exact height of all the trees, but they're fairly mature trees.
And you're to maintain those as best as possible, is that correct?
Correct. And actually, as we got into the field and have worked on some of the grading, we've actually even modified the grading slightly to try to pull that a little bit further away from that east tree line, because I think the Sulees are definitely in favor of saving those trees as well.
Okay, thank you. And I have an additional question. There's, I noticed there were no, like, color elevations for the duplex. Is that because the duplexes are custom, or why were those left out of the exhibits?
I don't think, I would have to study the elevations a little bit closer. He probably calls out materials and maybe some colors. I apologize, we probably should have had some color on those as well. They're not a custom. I mean, they, I think selected a couple of different material combinations perhaps for each one, to try to break up the monotony. That was a stipulation of the preliminary plan and rezoning approval. So we've tried to mix, I think there's a couple different fronts on each plan per unit type, so that will probably attempt to avoid having simultaneous plans next to each other.
Okay. The only reason I ask is because you did include the single-family homes, but I didn't see anything on duplexes.
Right. The single families were easier, because they'd already constructed that. These were newly designed floor plans for them, for this particular project, so.
Okay, so there is no existing duplex that looks like those?
Correct. Yeah, these are new floor plans.
That explains. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Jury?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would like to know why there is a postponement required or requested?
I'll let the applicant discuss that more in detail.
Can he answer your question when he makes his presentation?
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Jury? All right. Mr. Sulee?
All right.
You're up.
Okay. Randy Sulee, Sulee Homes Incorporated, 3730 Northeast Troon Drive, Lee Summit, Missouri is our business address. In answer to the question about the postponement, we are needing a little bit more time on trying to construct some of the sidewalks and the trail that's going through the common area, and therefore, we think we'll need until that May 1st council meeting, until we're ready and have all that completed. Our Wyatt Road, addition to Wyatt Road is being worked on now. We're getting our, we have had it all excavated and dug out before the rains held us up, but we're scheduled to have our base coat of asphalt down on Wednesday of this week on Wyatt Road expansion. And so we're pretty confident we'll have all that completed here in the next week or two, but wouldn't be ready for the next council meeting, though. And I will answer the question on the, maybe back to the duplex elevations. We had those, we had a variety of different elevations drawn in order to, as Nathan and Dave, I think, mentioned, that so we won't have the same plan side by side. But we did not have color renderings of those made, but we did have those custom drawn, so we'd have about four different varieties of elevations and footprints as well, too.
Commissioner Fairbanks, do you have a question?
Yes. I'm curious, are these going to be for rent or for sale?
They will be, we're going to keep the attached units, and we will maintain ownership of them, so we plan on having a leased product. And other similar buildings that we own, that are about the same footage, the lease rates are somewhere in that $1,100 to $1,200 per month. It's about our average lease rate, where we have these in different parts of town, or at least similar footages. Now, we don't have these exact same elevations, but we have similar footages.
Okay. I have a question also, and I don't know whether this is the appropriate time or not.
Commissioner Fairbanks, could you turn your microphone on, please? Thank you.
I have some other questions, and I don't know whether or not this is the appropriate time. I was concerned about the homeowners association being responsible for maintenance of that water pond area in that southern, southwestern area.
Our, that is the way that we plan on it being maintained by the dues that'll be collected from not only the single-family, but the multifamily section, or we'll all pay monthly dues.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody will have rights to the playground and to the pool, but they'll also have to share in the maintenance of all the common ground, and common ground being around the wet detention pond as well.
I was just concerned about the level of expertise of homeowners for maintaining that type of property.
The homeowners, we will be in charge of that until we turn the homeowners association over to the community. And typically, we will not turn over that until we're finished building out the development, which will end up having, I think, around 150, 155, 165 single-family homes and 33 duplex units. But we will hire, that'll actually be hired by a mowing service, by a company that'll come in and maintain and mow that, and maintain that for the community until we turn it over to the HOA.
I'm not concerned about you taking care of it. I'm concerned about when you turn it over to the homeowners association and their ability to take care of it.
That I can't, yeah, I can't speak for them, but by the time we usually have that turned over, we have a similar project at Moreland School Road and Adams Dairy Parkway. It is a struggle for the first few years of having enough funds to maintain everything the way we want it, but by the time we turn it over to the homeowners, there's typically enough annual income where they can not only have plenty of money to take care of it properly, but they also usually have reserves for replacement, and, you know, being able to put money aside for someday, the pool needing replaced, and playground equipment needing to be updated. Typically, there's plenty of funds there for them once we turn it over to them.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Sulee? Commissioner Wallace?
Sure. Can you get an anticipated timing on that third phase?
The reason we asked for the timeframe on the pool, on the community pool, to be approved up until the third phase, is because we were hoping to get our asphalt and everything down before winter time. We didn't hit that. We actually got hung up by a little bit of inclement weather in December. Therefore, we went ahead and got approval. Schlagel and Associates went ahead and submitted plans for the second phase, and we got all of our infrastructure, almost, in fact, almost all of the sanitary sewer and storm sewer was completed for the second phase during the winter months, and we're very close to being able to complete the second phase. That's why we asked for the pool. We don't think we'll have the pool built before the second phase. We come back in before Planning Commission and council for the second phase. Although we do have a, we have submitted the pool plans and the site plan for the pool, we just cannot start building that, obviously, until this first plat is in and approved. But we plan on building that this summer, late spring, hopefully early summer, and we're under contract with Swim Things here in Blue Springs to build that for us. However, we may be back before you with the second plat, with the second phase plat, asking for approval for that, and we probably will be under construction with that pool during that timeframe.
Okay. So you don't see trouble with this, you're just going to be moving right from phase to phase to phase?
Yes, we are. Yes.
That's your plan?
Yes, our plan, yeah.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Sulee? All right. Thank you, sir. Items two and three were presented together, so we'll consider those separately. So I would entertain a motion for the plan development, final plan of Colonial Highlands.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Haney?
I would approve the final plan, PDF 03175734, Colonial Heights, to be approved with the four conditions.
I have a motion, how about a second? A second from Commissioner Wallace. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four would be the, or, excuse me, item three would be the final plat, so I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Haney?
Motion to approve final plat, PF03175735, Colonial Heights, with the 10 conditions.
Colonial Highlands.
Colonial.
I have a motion, how about a second? A second from Commissioner Wallace. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will send that recommendation for, with our approval, to the May 1st City Council meeting, which is at 6 o'clock. Thank you very much. Brings us to other business, and Mr. Allen is going to present the downtown design standards recommendation. And move you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. I wanted to highlight briefly several pages, five-page, plus a memo near the back of your agenda packet. This is related to downtown design standards. To back up a little bit further from what's in the memorandum from Matt Wright, senior planner who oversees a lot of the downtown projects. Back in September of this last year, staff invited a gentleman who represents the brick industry out of Iowa to come down and talk about downtown design guidelines, standards, spec books, things like that, that he's come across in his work representing the brick industry. As you know, downtowns, obviously, for the most part, historic nature, are made of, or incorporate some level of brick. So we had him come down, speak before city staff, as well as the Downtown Alive Committee, their Downtown Alive Design Team. And again, that was back in September, and from that, the group got a lot of great ideas to look at creating a little bit more enhanced spec book or design standards related to development in downtown. So with that in mind, a subcommittee was formed by Downtown Alive's design team, and I won't go through the whole memo here, but they essentially were able to work through the last few months here, putting together a draft set of design standards in a little bit more specific nature than what we have now, obviously, but not overly cumbersome in terms of recreating code language and things of that sort. There is one portion I'll reference here shortly about the UDC, so actual code language, but the rest is really primarily, again, just a guidebook, a tool for those coming into the downtown area to create new, or redevelop existing property. So with that, I'll highlight some of those items here in particular. So first, the group really wanted to highlight things such as awnings, and how there can be some consistency in design and features related to that. You can see some examples there as well. What's encouraged versus what's discouraged. The same was the case for signage and lighting. Obviously, a little bit more detail with that one. Roofs and parapets, so in terms of a little more architectural features beyond just add-ons like awnings and signs, and some more specificity there as well, again, just guidance language here in particular. And finally, wanted to highlight materials detail and penetrations, again, some more of the gingerbread, as they call it, related to some of the redevelopment and expansion of existing buildings downtown, to include some of these elements. I said finally, but one more element that was kind of new to all this was the concept of solar panels. Downtown Review Board has been faced with some requests for including some alternative energy provisions within, in projects within downtown on specific properties, so they wanted to address that in particular, since that was kind of more of a current event-type issue. So not something that was necessarily designed related to start, but something they saw as a potential for getting some additional use in the downtown. And finally, as was explained in the memorandum, there is a component of the UDC that's proposed to be redesigned here with the red lettering, as you can see. That is not, again, that requires public hearing, public notice, things like that, so this is more informational, just to get some feedback, if you had any comments on this component. But essentially, the rest of this is moving forward to City Council for a, just a resolution to essentially acknowledge and accept what that design team subcommittee put together over the last few months. So we will be seeing kind of our next round of UDC changes, as we've been doing it about twice a year, more or less. We'll be seeing those probably in the May or June timeframe. So this is just one of those that would be included in that. And with that, again, I'll stand for any questions, if you happen to have any. Again, as staff, I serve on the Downtown Review Board as a voting member, which is a little unusual, but, and I know there are a few folks on the Planning Commission as well that represent the Planning Commission on Downtown Review Board. So hopefully, between the few of us, we'll be able to answer any questions if there are.
Are there any questions for Mr. Allen?
Mr. Allen, has there been any discussion about any changes in the parking downtown? Are they adding anything for handicap parking, or any additions to help out in that area? And I know we went to Phoenix before, and we saw where the city had bikes, they offered some kind of cycling. Has there ever been any discussion of having anything in terms of anything like that?
Good questions, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Bradoff. Good questions. Handicap parking, since this is really looking at design standards, not any other features in downtown, they didn't really address that particular issue. Certainly something we'd be looking at, I know we've been working with our Public Works staff as well, looking at some future capital improvements programs, CIP projects for the downtown area that hopefully would incorporate some of the handicap parking, things of that sort. As you know, regarding to, related to the bicycle component, there are some bike racks that were recently installed last year in the downtown. I fielded one serious inquiry last year, in fact, I think it was last spring or summer, from a gentleman who was looking at possibly expanding. There's the B-cycle program in Kansas City, which is the bike share program, doing a smaller version of that. So kind of not necessarily the same B-cycle program itself, but something similar to that. Again, just a kind of initial inquiry, not heard anything following up since then. A lot of those companies, in terms of their market they're looking at, they're looking at something beyond just the downtown area, but what other activities and services can be accessed. So in terms of, you know, if we had a, you know, even a community college, or some sort of school downtown, or we had perhaps some better facilities, biking facilities on 7 Highway or 40 Highway, there may be some opportunity for that. But I think he ran into some geographic limitations, because the downtown was small enough, and certainly compact enough, and useful enough for a bike share, but it really didn't allow for any kind of future expansion.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Good question.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Allen? All right. Thanks, sir.
All right. Thank you. Again, this will go forward to the City Council next week with just a resolution, and look to see the Downtown Live folks utilizing these standards hopefully fairly soon. Again, I use standards, but again, it's really guidelines, and trying to create some more of a guidebook and help with development coming into downtown. So balancing that line between guidance and code language, so, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Jury, do you want to bring us up to speed on the 2016 Annual Planning Commission Report?
Sure can. Thank you, Chairman Graham, and all the Planning Commissioners, for all of the hard work that you've done over the past year. We definitely appreciate, Blue Springs definitely appreciates everything you do to direct and guide development here in the city. We're definitely proud as staff to serve you guys. So with that, the annual report is just this overview of everything we've done and accomplished in Blue Springs in 2016. We are continuing to rebound from the recession. Couple just points that I'll make, quick points, are, in 2016, we had 171 new single-family homes permitted, which is the most since 2004. So we've increased, I believe, almost every year for the past five, and I think it's, and it's definitely been the most since 2004. So another thing, Planning Commission did review 77 applications in 2016 compared to 47 2015, so an extra 30 applications that you've seen year over year. So thanks for all your hard work, and we expect this to translate to more development in 2017. Thank you again.
All right. Was there any questions for Mr. Jury? All right. Thank you. All right, thank you. Mr. Allen?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I neglected to press for a more formal recommendation on the downtown design guidelines that we can pass along to the City Council, so may I press for?
Would you like a vote on that, then?
That would be preferred. I appreciate, again, the questions from Chris Schrader and the general agreement with what we're proposing, but I think it would be favorable to get a more formal vote.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve a recommendation for the downtown standards, then.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner, appeal.
I approve that the downtown design standards as presented by staff be approved.
I have a motion, how about a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second from Commissioner Fairbanks. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. And I have one item under other business that I need to take care of this evening. This will be Commissioner Sanders' last meeting with us, so if I could ask you to come over here by me, and we have a small token to present to you for your four years of serving on the Planning Commission with us from May 2013, or 2013, yeah, to April 2017, and so we appreciate it, and we're going to miss you on here.
It's been a ride, for sure.
So anytime you ever want to come back and see us, you're more than welcome.
I'll be back in two weeks.
In two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate all the input that you gave us on the commission, and like I said, we're going to meet. Did you want to say a few parting words?
It's, I am very proud of the city. I am.
Is this on?
I'm in the wrong spot. I'm very proud of the city, and all that we do here is, you know, a commitment for all of us to be here every two weeks, and the products we get to see, the staff recommendations have always been outstanding in the time I've been here. I'm very, really sincerely happy to see what Blue Springs has done. When I drive through the city, I've been here for 20 years, and I can honestly say it's much better now than when I moved into the city, and so I'm just thankful to be a part of that.
All right. Thank you, and good luck.
Thanks.
With the extra time you'll have on your hands now.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Any other business to be brought forward? Seeing none. Commissioner Wallace, did you have something?
No.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
I have a motion, how about a second?
A second.
I have a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.